The paid infrastructure of the city, but it cannot strip the social infrastructure of the city. Dinkytown takes very seriously its responsibility for all these students from all over small towns all over the area. We provide, we try to provide safety, real connections, affordable prices, and we need a certain stability of our social infrastructure to continue to do that. I am sorry to say that we have our first public meeting to discuss a murder at Fifth and Eighth tonight or tomorrow night, and that's really upsetting for Dinkytown, and that's one of the potential hazards of inappropriate density. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Yes, please state your name and address for the record.
Hello. My name is Mohammed, and I'm here as a representative of the West Bank Community Coalition. It's the neighborhood organization for the Cedar Riverside West Bank area, and I'm here today to oppose this amendment. Pretty much, I think everyone mentioned a lot of the reasons why, specifically relating to Cedar Riverside. It is the densest neighborhood not only in the city, but also in the state. Looking at the future plans, it's also one of the top three neighborhoods that are scheduled to be even, to have even more development. So I'm here as part of the neighborhood to say that Cedar Riverside is a perfect illustration of public services not matching up to development, and we are here from neighborhood residents all the time about how the density has hurt their quality of life. Over the last year, we've just had a new development which added 250 so new apartments to a three-blocked area that already has about 1,500 apartment units. So, yeah, you know, we've had a neighborhood survey that showed almost 80, 90 percent of the residents are completely opposed to that, and I just want to make sure that you guys consider that while there is a lot of benefits to that financially, there are also real people on the ground that are hurt by that every day. The worst story I've heard is with this new development, Parkettino Park, that is right on the back of Riverside Plaza. There are several units that literally the development in between is about two feet, and we've heard from many residents, one lady who says she can't even stay in her apartment anymore because right outside of her window is another building. So she has not, you know, where she used to have the view of downtown, now she has a view of a brick building, and she doesn't spend any time in her apartment, and she's just felt depression and other kind of mental effects because of that. So I just want to be a voice for those that can be here today, and I say you consider that as you consider this amendment. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this item? If there is no one, I will close the public hearing. And commissioners, are there any further questions, or would someone like to start the discussion off with a motion? Commissioner Gisselman.
Excuse me, I just had a question for Hyla, just regarding the actual number itself. And I guess before I ask that, I wanted to say first that I think something that Council member Frye said is helpful for us all to bear in mind, and that is that regardless of whether this language passes or not, that we still have a process of scrutiny safeguards that are in place for future projects from a zoning and planning perspective. And I think obviously it's helpful for us all to keep that in mind. Regarding this particular language, though, obviously, there's been a lot of discussion about the actual number, and certainly it's alarming to some, and I can understand how that would be because it's gone from 200 to 800, there's a major difference there, of course. I guess I'm just curious, though, when we talk about that particular number, I mean, for example, one of the speakers presented us with some numbers, assuming those numbers were accurate, I don't think that any of the existing or proposed projects on that list had more than perhaps 300 dwelling units per acre. And so I guess I'm just curious, I mean, if, let's say that we as a body tonight were to propose an amendment to this before it were passed to be something like 400 instead, what would be the harm in that? I mean, is that, would that be appropriate? I feel like I'd kind of be taking a shot in the dark, too, if I were to propose, you know, 400 as a number, but I'm just curious what your thoughts are about that.
Certainly. That is a high, the 800 unit per acre is, was designed, as I think some people have stated, sort of as an upper limit, not to say that most projects will approach it. We have had a couple of projects in recent, past couple of years that have gotten into the 700s units per acre. I can say that that does typically come across as a special case. I think in both cases, the projects were able to have their parking accommodated in buildings that weren't the main building, as a separate building, as is the case sometimes in downtown. I mean, sometimes in downtown, you can rely on existing structures or have them on a different site. So that increases the achievable density on site. It's frankly, to have a building that parks itself and achieves that level of density, that would be very, quite unusual. I mean, it's, it's not the goal of policy to be able to sort of figure out the building mechanics and try to calculate exactly what's achievable. Again, that was made as an umbrella term, just taking into account all these different cases, but I can say that, at least in our experience, it's not common to get very close to that number. You know, I wouldn't have a magic number to oppose to, offer as a separate, but that's been our experience to date.
All right. Are there any further questions of staff? Anyone like to make a motion? Commissioner Slack.
I will make a motion to approve staff recommendation for the text amendment for the very high-density comprehensive plan amendment.
Motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Commissioner Slack and then Commissioner Rockwell.
Well, first off, I'd like to thank everybody who came out to testify as it relates to this text amendment. We appreciate you being engaged in the community planning process, and it's, the testimony does make a huge difference in how we look and determine the viability of projects. For me personally, I see this as a policy statement. I think we had a couple of people out here testify that as a policy statement, it's really an overall arching guiding tool to help create a more sustainable city, and so, and that there are a lot of mechanisms in place to really get down to the nuts and bolts of our projects, these being other policy documents, which in a lot of cases are small area plans, which we look at as a very important piece of the review process. And then you have your regulatory tools, whether it's a zoning ordinance or the historic designation guidelines. So for me, as a policy statement, I'm fine with the number, I'm fine with text amendment. There are also a lot of cultural considerations that I personally, and I believe I speak for other members of the planning commission, that we really weigh heavily when we're looking at development projects. These cultural considerations are a lot harder to put a value on, but are really important to me as an individual on this commission. These include livability, quality of life, and for me, one that's really important is context, so really understanding the context of a project. I think also with that comes the input from the residents and the neighborhood communities and the neighborhood groups. That testimony is really important for us to hear really what the residents, the people who live in these communities, the people who ultimately will have to live with these projects, what they have to say weighs a lot on decisions that are made. And so for me, that's the reason why I'm making this motion and approving the text amendment.
Mr. Rockwell. I'd like to echo much of what Commissioner Slack said, make a couple additional points. I do think that context plays a large role here, and that in every project, and that the testimony we heard today underscores that. You know, a lot of, a lot of residents who testified today talked about NICE, the NICE development, as an example of an inappropriately high proposal in a sensitive area. And I guess I would point to the NICE development as a success for those alternate processes because there was initially a three-story development proposed, and because of those other mechanisms and because of neighborhood voices, it dropped to six. And that's a fantastic example of the fact that these upper limits, it do not mean that every development are going to reach those upper limits. We have other mechanisms in place. And this commission and our neighborhood associations and our city staff all take those considerations into account as we see in an example like NICE. There were a couple questions about the timeliness of this with the comprehensive plan update coming, and I understand that and hold those concerns as well, but I think, when I think of Minneapolis as a city, I think of a city that I want to see compete nationally and internationally in its fast-moving world. And if a compelling project comes up in the next few years that could help us continue to move in the direction that we want to see the city move in, I want to be able to see that development through. And that development will only go through if it's appropriate and if, going through all of the various processes we've discussed. So I think a vote for this text amendment is not a vote for unlimited density. I know there's a fear there of that, but it, what it does is it allows us to consider the opportunity in a streamlined fashion that, for projects that may increase our ability to use transit and walk and reduce our emissions through density and increase housing affordability. You know, the more we screw regulations into our code, the more we winch all those down, the higher our prices go, right? So I think that this provides opportunity, but does not, does not send all of our projects into the sky.
Commissioner Magrino and Commissioner Bender.
Thanks. Yeah, I just had a quick comment. You know, I know reading through the staff report here, there's sort of a lot of individual words and individual phrases that maybe seem sort of scary and seem sort of controversial, but I think when you take the staff report all together, it's kind of clear this is really just fixing a technicality in the comprehensive plan. This is an administrative move of property zone C1, its own C1. It's on the National Register of Historic Places, it's on the National Register of Historic Places. If it needs a CUP to build above four stories, it still needs a CUP to build above four stories. So I don't think that this is really quite as controversial as it seems when you see some of the words that kind of jump out of the paragraphs here. So I will be supporting the amendment.
Mr. Bender.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was going to make a point similar to Commissioner Magrino, so I think they did that very well. I do think, though, that the comments and the testimony that we've heard highlight how big of a deal the bigger question is about how our city is growing and changing, and we're in a time when, you know, we are attracting a lot of investment. We are seeing record numbers of permits come through the planning commission and my committee, the zoning and planning committee each year, and I think that speaks to the desirability of our city. And we're hearing a lot about the pros and cons of that, right? We're hearing about people's concerns about the visual character of their communities and how those changes impact the neighbors that have been there for a long time. We're hearing concerns about traffic, you know, and adding more cars to already congested streets, and I think we'll take those to heart as we look forward into the comprehensive plan and the future policy decisions that will be coming through in that. I do think, again, kind of underscoring that this is really not changing, it's not changing the growth centers or the activity nodes that have been designated, it's not changing the bulk of buildings that are allowed, but I think it also does kind of re-highlight again some of the benefits there are as well to having, to allowing more people to inhabit buildings of the same size. Even in neighborhoods more like mine, where the scale is much lower, you know, adding more people also has benefits. It helps support transit, so we get more cars off of the street and less traffic congestion that supports local businesses that people love. And so, you know, as we move forward and talking about density, this is just one very small piece of that discussion, so I wanted to just really highlight and thank people who came to talk about both of the sides, you know, both of those sides of that discussion. You know, I'll be supporting the amendment again because I think it really is just adjusting what is already an adopted policy that has been in place, but I look forward to the future conversations about how our city is growing.
Okay, thank you. And I'll just add, I too see this as largely a formality or clarification. There's one area in the text of the comprehensive plan where there's no real maximum to that density, and then another reference where it was at 200 units per acre. Really, those, those density requirements are a requirement of the Metropolitan Council and its requirement of cities to plan for growth so it can plan for its infrastructure investments. Right now, our zoning code doesn't currently refer to density like that. We do have obviously other regulations that restrict the bulk and height and location of buildings. So I don't see this as a very substantive change, even though I realize it does seem very jarring to see that number quadruple. And I also want to just reinforce that this certainly doesn't mean that we, that the city would allow a blanket 800 units per acre anywhere in any of these growth centers. We do have strong policy guidance in our small area plans as well as in our historic district guidelines that govern what develop looks like in the future. And as Hyla pointed out, we have seen at least a few projects that have gotten close to that 800 units per acre. So I realize that it's important that we resolve this issue and just clarify so that it doesn't become a big issue with future projects. I also want to add, there were some comments related to the impacts of population growth on safety and infrastructure. I want to just make sure that people understand it is important that the city grows in order for us to keep up with our infrastructure demands. There have been times when, in the city's history, when our population has declined, and that's when we've seen some really tough times when it comes to having the tax base to maintain our infrastructure. So having a growing city is important, I think, for the quality of life of all of us. So are there any further comments? If there are none, or please call a roll.
Slack.
Aye.
Rockwell.
Aye.
Magrino.
Aye.
Kronzer.
Aye.
Gisselman.
Aye.
Kegnan.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Seven zero.
All right, then that motion carries. That concludes our discussion on this item. We'll move on to item number two, which is a 3200 Bryant Avenue South, a rezoning, and staff is Mayling Smith. We can get started.
Good evening, President Brown and commissioners. The project before you is a proposal to rezone property 3200 Bryant Avenue South from the R2B zoning district to the C1 zoning district. As you can see right now, the subject property is located at the southwest corner of 32nd Street West and Bryant Avenue South. Bryant Avenue South is a community corridor in the area, as well as Lyndale Avenue South. Lake Street is located just a few blocks to the north, and that's a commercial corridor. Here are a few images of the existing building. It has two storefronts. It was originally construction in 1908 as a commercial property. It was downzoned, it was downzoned in 1924, so ever since 1924, it's been residentially zoned, as well as the surrounding area. And so any future commercial uses that come in have to either apply for an expansion of non-conforming use, or a change of non-conforming use, or rezoning, or stay as the exact same use continually. This is the proposed floor plan. The applicant is proposing two retail storefronts. One would be 995 square feet, and the other would be 1,345 square feet. It's, again, it's a one-story building. And here's a rendering of some of the facade improvements that the applicant has already made and intends to make going forward. And I know this item was polled, and I'm happy to answer any questions or just let the applicant and public speak.
All right. Commissioners, are there any questions of staff? If there are none, I'll open the public hearing, and I'd like to ask the applicant to speak first, just very briefly. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Dave Merrifield. I currently live at 3344 Fremont Avenue South, 55408. I am the owner of this property, along with my wife, and she and my now two daughters live close by at the address I just listed. I would say, you know, as a neighborhood resident, having driven by this building and seen the history of it before, some of you may be familiar, it was previously called the Bryant Avenue Market, most notably, in my opinion, known for selling cigarettes, Mountain Dew, and expired milk. So this is a project of mine that I'm looking to bring some rejuvenation into that space, and that's the reason for having two, splitting the space in two. And I think the city planner and the results of her assessment probably speak for themselves with the recommendation, so hoping that people can support it.
All right. And as I remember, there were maybe one or two people who were here to speak on this item yet, and you're welcome to speak now, so please come to the microphone and state your name.
Okay. Lee Switzenberg, and basically I own two properties that were within the circle of this. They are small apartment buildings, and I've owned one of them since either 1999 or 98, and I've been active in trying to keep this a nice neighborhood since I purchased it. It's my retirement plan, and if you can take a look at the hair, I'm getting old quick, so I'm kind of hoping to keep this part of Minneapolis really nice. This is my new neighbor, and I don't want to, I didn't want to actually come to the meeting, I didn't think I would have to come to the meeting because I thought it was kind of, would be headed the other direction, but I came here. I think that I had a lovely market, which I'm sure in 1904 sold fresh groceries and things like that, and provided for this. And you might not think it was nice, but when I'm working at one of the apartments that I renovated, if I needed to use toilet paper, it was down, down the corner. If I wanted some Windex to clean the windows, it was, it was there, it was very nice, and it kind of serviced the immediate neighbors. Like, and I advertised it to my renters as a very ugly but convenient convenience store because that's what it was. It was not beautiful by any means, and it was not a mom-and-pop grocery, it was just a pop. I mean, it was one person, they showed up every day, and it was really low-key. It was like the quietest business in town, even though it was ugly. And eventually, the neighbors all got together, and it was, I was also impetuous in this. They put a nice mosaic on the building because it always got graffiti, and the owner was up for that, and that's since been removed, which is great because this gentleman did a nice renovation on the exterior of the building. So there you have it. It is a neighborhood that's kind of, they now call it Lynn Lake. It's the outer reaches of the greater uptown, and it is well-served by commercial properties, and it is kind of a quiet little residential niche in the neighborhood. It's zoned R2B, and I believe we're here because this property is kind of out of compliance with the current use as it was built. And most of the buildings on this particular street, I shouldn't say most, but at least half of them, and the two I own are also non-conforming to the zoning as it's written. And I, so I'm here to make my comments. I think it's a beautiful neighborhood, a very quiet business that serves the neighborhood was there. I don't know what's going to come in there because if you change the zoning from R2B non-conforming to C1, there won't be too much neighborhood input on what goes on, and it could be a number of things. There's a lot of single-family homes close by, and I've heard that this gentleman has generated quite a bit of support. And I'm thinking there's going to be signage if they put a restaurant in, which may or may not have enough parking spaces. I believe they can stay open until 2 o'clock in the morning. I know my residents wouldn't be that happy about it. And so there's many potential uses that could come into this building if it goes C1 and is no longer non-conforming. And I think I was listening to Councilperson Fry earlier talk about consistency, and there is like to have this one C1 parcel in the middle of a C of R2B zoning, and to do it, I believe would open up any other property owner who has non-conforming property on the block to asking to have their zoning changed to how the building was intended to be used. And I think that there's a lot of people that would hope to take advantage of that, so perhaps that you would set a precedence in regards to that, you would kind of break up your zoning, and I think it could be repurposed possibly for a home, maybe for a mobility-impaired person or something like that. There, it would, there are other uses for it. So that's kind of my thoughts, and obviously you folks are going to make the big decision, and I do wish you well with whatever you do with it. So that was it. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak? Yes. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Pamela Meyerhoff, and I am here not because I'm particularly against anything that Dave wants to do, but like the gentleman who spoke before, but even more so, I have a very, very close proximity. My building, my house is basically almost one with the store, so our backyard is, it's very non-conforming because as I, when I looked into making some alterations in my home, I discovered that you could never build the way this neighborhood is, much denser. In fact, it achieves more density than almost anywhere else in the neighborhood. So my main concerns would be really the opening the door with the rezoning. I'm, this, as previous gentleman did say for me, this was a small store, it was ugly for a while, but it did provide a neighborhood service. It was mostly people walking to it. It wasn't open very late, and I guess my concern is seeing how certain development is going, that there's been a lot more bar, restaurant, late-night kind of active businesses going in, and I'm concerned that changing the zoning of this will open the door to possibly creating a situation that would seriously impact my property because there is really, there is no parking, there's no room really for the garbage. There's, this was clearly built before many, many regulations, so I just want to make sure that the property stays probably zone residential with a variance to use for limited purposes. Amazingly, as a convenience store, it was a very quiet property, there were very little problems, except for the usual graffiti and that sort of nature. So my preference as a very close neighbor would be to keep it zoned as it is and to allow variance for some limited commercial use. And, you know, I just have concerns about what are the property, you know, the nature of the property value just because of the very tight residential property in this area. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this item? If there's no one, I will close the public hearing. Commissioners, are there any further questions, or would anyone like to start off with a special motion? Commissioner Kronzer and then Commissioner Bender.
Has the property lost its non-conforming status?
No.
Okay. And then can you remind us what basic uses are allowed in C1?
General retail sales and services, bakery, let's see. You know, the intent is to have small-scale neighborhood-serving uses, so antique stores, you could have a small bank there, you could not have pawn shops, you could not have a tobacco shop or auto repair liquor store, so that would not be allowed in C1.
Can you have a restaurant or a massage?
You would be able to have a restaurant with limited entertainment, and you could have a restaurant. Now, the space is very limited. Right now, the building is approximately 2,400 square feet, so if the property owner chooses to use that, they'd be very limited in how they use the building, and they'd be restricted from a licensing standpoint as well.
Commissioner Dave.
Okay, my question was similar. So under current zoning, those things are allowed?
I'm sorry, did I misunderstand the question?
So under current zoning?
Current zoning, you could do a single-family home or a two-family home. I apologize if I misheard the question.
No, I think I misunderstood.
So very few non-residential uses would be allowed, and most of the So very few non-residential uses would be allowed, and most of them have a minimum lot area requirement of ten thousand, twenty thousand square feet.
Okay. And are there any alternatives other than to allow him to build what he would like to build than rezoning to C1?
Steph has responded to the finding about whether there are any other reasonable uses under the current property. If they were to do a single-family home or a duplex there, they would have to get a minimum lot area variance. And then they'd also have to get a minimum lot area variance, probably for any other non-residential use that they would use. So we find that there are very, there are almost no reasonable uses under the existing zoning for that property.
But there's alternative methods of achieving?
Yes. So the applicant came in with the rezoning request, but they have the option also to request the change of non-conforming use if they wanted to. So they could have pursued that. Every time the use changes, they have to submit, they have to go through the public hearing process again because of its non-conforming status.
Mr. Bender.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would make a motion if there are no more questions. So, thank you. I would move to follow the staff recommendation and grant the rezoning to C1, and happy to speak briefly.
Motion in a second.
This is in the tenth board. It is unusual in that it's, so we've seen a few of these recently where, you know, this is a building that was clearly built for commercial purposes and was rezoned because one philosophy of zoning is to, you know, take the sort of areas of the city and blocks and zone them for future use. But, so it is a bit unusual.